We'll call this work session Monday, May 6th to order. Invitation given by Jacob Lee and the pledge allegiance by Leighton Dawson.
Please bow your head. Thank you, Lord, for this day. Please... Thank you, uh... Make this city have good choices. Let them... Let them... Thank you for this country for us to be free. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number one tonight, discuss the rezoning request of God杯 Baptist Church. Pastor Johnson?
Thank you all for considering this. We applied for this rezoning due to updating of things that are happening on our property and also to try to go forward with some other options that we're trying to cultivate, so.
Okay. Josh, this is zoned what right now? Okay. And we're asking for? And this is the plan here in the packet?
It is, yes.
Okay. Well, Pastor Johnson, I know I've heard great things going on over there. Really appreciate your work in the community right now, the whole church. Anyone have any questions as far as this rezoning?
I don't have any questions. The planning commission voted unanimously to make this happen and it's a good thing that I think will be an asset, not just for the church, but the Scottsboro as a whole.
I agree.
And probably increase the property values of neighbors down there, too.
Yes. Okay. Anyone else have any comments? We'll put that on next week's meeting for a vote.
Okay.
Thank you. Number two, discuss the school resource officer agreement. Ms. Childers?
Thank you so much. Mr. Haas is giving you guys a corrected copy, completed copy of the draft that we have discussed that is... Does not have any different colors of ink. It is all black and white ink, all final revision, so I wanted you to have a hard copy of that tonight. So, thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to speak on my behalf... On the behalf of myself and the Scottsboro City Board of Education. I'm pleased to share this SRO agreement proposal with you. This proposal is being presented after many discussions with Mayor McCamey, Police Chief Ron Latimer, Assistant Superintendent Jason Haas, City Attorney Mr. Steve Kennamore, and our Scottsboro City Schools Board Attorney Mr. Taylor Brooks. I appreciate each school principal whose insight through day-to-day work with our SROs was instrumental also in developing this proposal. I also appreciate the efforts of Mr. Jason Arnold, whose role as operations director oversees the school safety process. As you know, now more than ever, school resource officers play a crucial role in our schools. First and foremost, SROs serve as a visible deterrent to potential threats and incidents of violence within our schools. One need only look at the daily news to see the importance of having qualified, highly-trained officers in our schools. Their presence creates a sense of security among students, teachers, and parents, fostering an environment conducive to learning. By patrolling school premises, monitoring entrance and exits, and collaborating with school administrators on safety protocols, our SROs play a vital role in preventing, detecting, and mitigating security threats. SROs serve as trusted mentors and positive role models for our kids. They engage with young people daily, building meaningful relationships based on trust, respect, and mutual understanding. These interactions extend beyond law enforcement duties to encompass mentorship, guidance, and support for students facing both challenges inside and outside the classroom. By fostering positive relationships with the youth they serve, our officers contribute to the development of responsible, engaged, and law-abiding citizens. Our current SROs know our children and have built those meaningful relationships that are the very foundation of the safety and security they provide. Additionally, SROs play a critical role in addressing issues such as bullying, substance abuse, and mental health crisis within the school community. Through proactive intervention, counseling service, and referrals to appropriate support networks, SROs help address underlying issues that may compromise student's safety and well-being. Their training in conflict resolution, crisis intervention, and de-escalation techniques equips them to handle a wide range of situations effectively and compassionately. It is essential to recognize that the role of SROs extends far beyond law enforcement. They are integral members of our school community, working collaboratively with our educators, administrators, counselors, and other stakeholders to create a safe and supportive learning environment for all. Their presence enhances security and promotes positive youth development, social, emotional well-being, and academic success. While this proposal does require Scottsboro City Schools to take on additional cost, we believe the safety to be worth every penny. As I shared with those who attended this year's State of Education address, Scottsboro City Schools continue to see a rise each year in the number of students who are in need of various mental health supports. We are grateful to have a school nurse in each school, a social worker for the school system, as well as a mental health coordinator. These staff members, combined with each school SRO and school counselors in each school, help provide the many needed and ongoing supports to support the whole child. We have benefited from the federal funds that were allocated to school districts to support the learning loss associated with the COVID pandemic, and these identified supports are and remain our highest priority. While our legislators have made great strides to secure funds for these rapidly increasing needs, these support professionals are not fully funded, and our challenge continues to seek funds needed to continue to provide these needs. While we currently rely on many awarded state grants and federal funds to help support these measures, I humbly ask that we can continue to revisit our agreement annually and continue to work together to find the funds and share these expenses to help keep our SROs funded by the structure we are supporting for all the reasons mentioned. Continuity will be critical to providing the systems of support for the whole child as we continue to work to return... Turn to normal from the pandemic. Many school systems are suffering due to the turnover in teachers and administrators. While we have had a small turnover in filling some teacher and administrative positions, we are in excellent shape compared to many school systems within the state of Alabama. We desperately need the stability of staff in these areas that help support so many students and are proven to directly impact student achievement. Therefore, this proposal ensures that our current SRO structure remains in place, and most importantly, that their time spent building essential relationships, knowing our kids, their families, and our community, combined with their knowledge gained through past and ongoing training, is not wasted. This proposal helps us maintain and build on the strong foundation that already exists, for we know there are many changes and challenges that lie ahead. Thank you in advance for considering this proposal. We appreciate your partnership, and we appreciate the support of Scottsboro City Schools.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for putting this together. I know there was a lot of hours put into this, and there was a lot of work.
I think everybody who was involved, or there were lots of people.
Yes, and so, thank you for that. Let me first open it to the council. Anyone have any questions about this proposal? If no questions for them, of course, before we could actually put this on a vote, I would need a... Approve... Right now, I assume you've just polled.
We have just polled, there's been no official board vote.
Yeah, so we'll need an official board vote.
Okay.
To approve it before we can approve your proposal.
Sure.
So, I'm gonna put this on the 20th for a vote from the council to give you enough time.
Okay.
Because that'd be our next meeting after next week, of course.
Okay.
We'll double up that night. Then, the only other question I'd have is, since there's been some questions asked to me about this proposal... So, you will pay for the three part-time?
Yes, that's what the agreement is.
Completely, that's the way it was before.
Yes.
The two full-time, you will pay $100,000 to cover partial salary.
That would be partial.
Yes, and so, the only question it was brought up, I don't want to get a black eye later, is has there been an ethics opinion on this, since we do have a little situation there with that, since you'll be paying part of the salary?
We do not pay... They are not our employees.
Yes, I understand that. It comes from the city.
And so, our opinion of our board attorney...
We bill you for those, yes.
Is that we are... The payment structure is as-is because we pay for services provided, and they are, in fact, your staff.
Yes, yes.
Members. So, if you would prefer that I get something in writing to you, I can certainly do that from our board attorney.
Yes, then.
Okay.
That would just...
Yeah.
So that it covers us.
Okay, sure.
And then it lays on you that way, of course.
You're here for me, right?
Yes, yes.
I got you. I get it, I under...
Well, I've told many people over this, and, you know, they've gripped at me. I said, "I wasn't elected to the school board, I was elected to the city council."
Sure.
So, I'm definitely looking out for the city first and then the school board next because we're all one, you know, we're all a team here.
Correct, absolutely. And, you know, our board attorney has been involved in this whole process with us, as everybody knows, and so, I'm not an attorney, nor do I want to...
Exactly.
...to speak on an attorney's behalf, but I will most definitely get something in writing from our board attorney and get that to...
And that's why I sit beside mine.
Absolutely. So, I am not going to try to do your job, Mr. Kennamore, nor our board attorney's job, so I will definitely get something in writing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll put this on the 20th, and like I say, with the approval from your board, then we'll vote that night.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Appreciate it. All right, number three, discuss historic preservation commission architectural review board ordinance. Mr. Kennamore, you were gonna go over that?
Yes, sir. In 1982, the city adopted a historic preservation ordinance, and in amongst that was certain things in regard to the architectural review board. The city sometime later, in the last few years, has adopted the Muni Code. And when we were going through that, it was the intent of the clerk and myself that nothing would change in regard to the architectural review board. We have discovered that the Muni Code section in recent weeks is not exactly the same as the original ordinance. So, I would propose to you that since there was no intent to change the ordinance when the Muni Code was done, that we go back to the original 1982 ordinance with a couple of additions or clarifications. And those additions or clarifications, I've had at least one discussion with a member of that board, that the original ordinance said that to be on the historic preservation board, you had to own property in the historic district. That limits it to just a very few people. We would request you to consider adding the words "or" as a business operator within the historic district. Another potential change that we would ask you to do is a clarification of the ex officio-only nature of Mr. Little in these meetings, and that what his duties would be and what his duties would not be. And those would be the only changes made, but go back to 1982 with those changes.
Okay.
And I would need your permission to move forward.
All right. Anyone have any questions, Mr. Kennamore, on this situation? No questions, we'll put that on the next meeting for... To vote on approval of that. All right, number four, discuss moving trucks from the fleet program to the police department. And I will go over this one myself. Chief Latimer was lucky enough to receive a grant from Representative Dale Strong's office, an amount of $120,000 to cover vehicles. We have three F-150s who will be rolling out of the fleet program. We will be putting those up for bid soon. Chief would like to buy those three trucks in the amount of $40,000 each, the $120,000, and that money go in... Back into the fleet program to purchase the next trucks. This is a great opportunity to upgrade investigators' vehicles, at the same time, you know, keep moving forward with our fleet program. So, anyone have questions on this... This program here, moving these three trucks from... From the fleet program to the police department? No questions, we'll move out to next week's meeting then. Thank you. All right, number five, discuss the riprap and fence at Bynum parking lot. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. As you know, recently, we've done some work over there. To finish the next phase of that work, would be putting that riprap on the east side of the channel there with a new fence there. It's about a $50,000... It's been quoted at right around $50,000. I would like to bring back a... And set out bids for that, to do that.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Will this be just for the riprap or be for the fence, too?
Both combined.
Okay.
The fencing was around $10,000. The riprap was quoted about 37.
And if you haven't been over and saw the other side, it's really nice, how it turned out, and so... So, anyone have any questions about... You're just wanting to ask right now to put out bids for it, correct? Okay. So, anyone have questions on that? All right, we'll put that on next week's meeting. All right, number six, while you're standing there, discuss the shade replacement at Bynum Park.
Yes, so we got you some information earlier today.
Whitney would say not much earlier today.
Not much earlier. So, there's several things here, and I want to kind of go over it just a little bit. The first couple of things you see, this weekend, we have a tournament there that is gonna have 72 teams. We have 11 from Tennessee, one from Georgia, the rest are from Alabama, across 7U to 15U. That is larger than even the... Any ballpark in the north half of the state. So, Albertville isn't hosting this many teams, Fort Payne's not hosting this many teams, Gardendale's not hosting this many teams. Granted, they will need to move a few of them, just because we don't have quite the space for that many teams. So, they let those people sign up, but there's more people wanting to come here than other places. Just wanted to preface it with that. Behind that, you'll see two proposals. The first one was for basically just taking down the fence behind the backstops and extending netting up to about 30 feet. When you... If you go to other ballparks, that's what you see at other ballparks. The high schools field has done that. Any other upgrade that you see is doing that. The cost for just the netting was $142,000, and there's a picture of an example. To add the bricks below that makes that project up over $200,000 to do all four backstops.
This is for Bynum, right?
That's for Bynum, yes, sir. The shades that used to be there, if you'll keep going, a replacement for the overhanging shades, the canopy that creates... It creates some safety, it still leaves a little bit of... So would the other ones, but what this mainly does is it provides shade, which prevents a lot of the balls that go up from coming down and causing injury as well. Replacing those shades is quoted out at $96,500. That's from the company that put them up back in 2011. And you see a diagram of what that would look like as well. It's essentially... The poles that are there don't have to be moved or changed in any way, it just allows us to hook what was up just with a newer product right now. And y'all have both mentioned those. We've mentioned these several times in the last few meetings. The last thing on there, I would suggest before you make either of those decisions, if there is any interest and desire to expand what we... Or redevelop what we currently have at Bynum Park, take that into consideration before you decide to make one of these two changes. Once you make those changes, you know, you put a lot of money into it, I know, and that changes maybe what you would want to do for the future. So, that's why I kind of wanted to demonstrate that we have good relationship with the guys running these tournaments. They have... And they're bringing a lot of teams here. And so, if that's something that the council would want to do, just consider that before making a decision on the regular backstops being extended or replacing the shades that were there.
Your recommendation?
On the two proposals, even though the shades are not what you see normally, the shades would be easier to take down if you did want to change the layout or redevelop Bynum. In that regards, I would recommend that. If you want to do... That would be my recommendation. If you're gonna choose one of those two options, the shades would be more... Would be easier to take down and then redevelop.
But are they... Uh, excuse me, but are they safe? Are they gonna be...
They will prevent...
...take care of the kids that...
It will prevent most of the balls from coming down. You know, with there being gaps in between, their balls will still hit and kind of tinker their way down, and will still roll off, but they'll roll off from a much less height and much less velocity. So, they'll roll down. They may still land on you a little bit, but it won't be coming from off the bat 100 feet up in the air. So, it does prevent some... It does prevent safety. It allows you to have a safer environment.
But let me say, if we're gonna do the shades, then this last page would be no because...
Right.
If you're gonna spend... These shades came in $96,500. And if you put the shades up and then start this project here, then you've just taken them right back down for nothing. So, the decision for the council's gonna have to be, are we gonna look at redoing Bynum completely? Just redoing the four fields? Or just putting shades on and moving on? So...
I will add, if I may.
Go ahead.
In the three years I've been here, we have fixed presently four plumbing leaks under the complex, and there's one waiting to be fixed until the end of the season.
One that's going to the dog park?
Is the one that leads to the dog park.
That's one I've had some complaints about.
Yes.
Yes, because no water was there last week.
Correct.
And the only way to get water there right at the moment would be to tear up a field and not have ballgames.
But even though that problem is there, we should still have water out there. We have maintenance that could put something out there. I don't care if it's bottled water.
And if you look on this back page, Mr. Wood has put you a kind of a timeline. If you decided you wanted to upgrade Bynum and build more fields there, it would be done in sections, so that there'd be no games lost at any time. And I know that... We had lunch today, and I appreciate you going over all this with me today.
Yes, sir.
Because I really wanted to wrap my head around all this before we had this meeting. And you'll see, we'd be going from four to eight fields at Bynum if it could work out. Now, I would have liked to have all this before we were doing deals with the board, because this goes a little bit over on them, so...
Well, we talked about this shade cloth, I don't know how far back. I know it went to the last budget year.
Yes.
Yes, three years.
And, of course, the cost estimate on putting those four new fields will be, I think, more than we want to pay right now. I'd be for just doing shade cloth myself.
Okay.
Just to add, if you make that decision, it's about a 10- to 12-week turnaround from the moment we tell them to go.
So, getting these brand-new shade cells, so are you guys gonna paint the poles and get them ready, because they're a mess? Building bathrooms for...
We can do some of that. The building itself has some code issues, which is part of driving kind of the idea of redeveloping the complex a little bit, but we're limited with our space and what we can do there.
But these were things that we went over and walked... We had our walkthrough with, and they've never been checked off.
Okay. When you say checked off...
They've never been...
I need you to explain that.
They've never been handled.
I need you to explain that.
They've never been handled.
Okay. Because a few weeks ago, you said it had never been brought up, and it was brought up in our budget meeting back last August.
We're not talking about the shades. The shade's been brought up, done. It's the bathrooms, the...
The list that you, the mayor, and the three council members went through the park and made...
Checked all of those off, you know?
Okay.
The bushes.
Okay.
Right?
All right, so what I'm gonna do is go ahead and put this on the meeting next week, and give council a week to decide on kind of which way you think you want to lean towards. And even if we don't look at going... Building more fields, we do have to look at upgrading the fields we have.
I agree with you. I think we need to take care of what we got first.
Well, and either way, you'd be taking care of what you got. This plan, and I'm not for either one yet, I'm gonna need more time, but this plan would upgrade each one while it built more. But also, like I say, the shades, if you were gonna do that, you wouldn't need the shades, because it's gonna change the layout. So, that's why I say, study this, and whatever... Whatever you bring next week, we'll do that.
I don't recall any conversation about additional fields before.
No, no, well, not at a meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. So...
You know, it's not just the shade, it's more for the safety than it is the shade on there.
Yes.
And that's what we discussed for a good while, and it's more money than I thought it...
It's a lot more.
That I remembered it.
Yes. Anyways, you got it in your packet? We'll put that on next week's meeting. All right? We'll move to number seven, discuss fitness equipment at the RecCom Fitness Center.
Yes, sir. Y'all were sent a proposal a couple of weeks ago that included 16 new pieces of equipment at the RecCom. Most of our equipment right now is in the 20-year range, 20 years old. We have a few pieces in the weight room that we currently cannot fix. We've gotten replacement parts for the things we can fix, some of them just don't make the same parts anymore. And so, we are desperately in need of upgrading the equipment in the weight room, and that's the... This will be the first phase of that. To do it all at one time would be huge. So, we've got a... The guy that came in and did a survey with us, we've done surveys, we did surveys with our patrons for about a month and a half and got their input as to what kind of equipment we would need and what kind they don't use, things like that. And so, a gentleman came in from Huntsville that does layouts. He recommended changing the layout just a little bit so that it would include some ADA access for people on the equipment that they can get on, creating a little bit more space around those equipment so they can get in and use those. So, this would be for the first phase, which includes 16 new pieces of cardio equipment.
Okay. And how much was that? We don't have that in our packet, so... And while you're looking for that, I spoke with Ms. Roden earlier, and this is something I believe we need to have a line item for a yearly upgrade. That way, we can, during budget time, work some money in there. That way, we're not... We can replace one piece a year or something like that, or two, as needed.
I'll find the other email, but it's around $85,000. I did include it with y'all about two weeks ago. It's $85,000.
And that would be for how many pieces?
16. It comes with a three-year warranty on parts and some service.
And these are all cardio pieces, so... Mike, me and you are out. Anything else? Anyone got questions on that? All right, we'll move that to next week's meeting. Thank you. All right, number eight, discuss the revenue officer job description. Ms. Roden?
Okay, in your packet, there is the revenue officer job description, and I updated it. It hadn't been updated since 2011, and if you notice there at the back, I just added a section for... And if you notice there at the back, I just added a section for in regards to sales tax, lodging tax, and short-term rentals. I know the short-term rentals is a newer thing we're doing. And then with those added duties, I was wanting to request the job be upgraded from a grade 17 to a 19.
Anyone have questions on this job description?
The upgrade would be to comparing it to other.
Well, that, and these are things that we haven't been doing before, especially with the short-term rentals. I mean, that's, and that's gonna be a monthly thing, too, having to keep up with that.
And we're hoping it's gonna add a lot to that job.
Yeah.
Once we identify and get everybody on board.
We've sent out letters and got a lot of people in here and getting compliant with that word next, so.
Yes.
How many do we have now, short-term rentals?
I think there was, was it like 21 to 23, maybe?
Those are just the ones that have been identified and sent letters so far.
I'm sure there's some out there that hasn't been identified yet.
Yeah, I'm sure there is.
All right. Anyone else have any questions about this job description? Nope. All right, thank you, put that on next week's meeting. All right, number nine, discuss Aqua Services contract. Ms. Phillips, you go over that.
This is the annual contract with Aqua Services. It has increased just a little bit. Last year, we paid $1,845 per treatment, and we did three treatments. We paid for two, and water searing guys paid for one. The 2024 proposal is for $1,892.31 per treatment.
And remind everyone, those services are for underneath the overpass there, Roseberry Creek, that has to be done yearly. Also, like she said, we split this with water searing gas, and we did two last year, so I think the next one is theirs.
Sounds good to me.
Just want to be clear on that. So anyone have any comments or questions on the, on the contract? None? All right, we'll put that on next week's meeting. Thank you. All right, number 10, discuss Patrick's meat market, Mr. Rosely?
I don't know who received an email versus who didn't receive an email. A lot of them came back undeliverable. What I've just put in your hands is a way of outlining how I intend to pay back the debts owed. I'm not saying that I don't owe the money, because I know that I do owe the money. I've been down on my luck, not gonna lie. I've been through a lot of serious changes over the last few, few years. I've been dealt a bad hand, but I also know that you have to play the hand that you're dealt. I was in debt with the state of Alabama using the same plan. I've got the state of Alabama paid off, and I can do the same for you guys if you're willing to work with me. The original agreement went haywire right off the bat. That's no fault of your guys, that's no fault of mine, that's just where we stand. This right here will make that right, and make it right in a quicker manner. It'll be easier on me to, if, if you look, and it explains in depth as to how I can make the arrangement work, but it will make it easier on you guys, make it easier on myself. And, and like I said, you know, I mean, I know that the taxes are used for educational purposes. I'm a board member of the, you know, Board of Education. This right here helps fund my teachers, my principals, my people that I support. I'm not trying to keep money away from these guys. I greatly appreciate each and every one of them and what they do for our city, just like I appreciate each and every one of you and what you guys do for our city. Like I said, you know, I got behind the eight ball the day we opened our doors. I fought through obstacle after obstacle, and, and you know, this is another one that was placed in front of me. If you give me the opportunity, I'll fight through this one as well. I'll make this right. Like I said in that email, when I see you guys at Walmart, I want to be able to shake your hand and smile at you and pat you on the back, say it's good to see you. I don't want to have to duck and run, go the other direction, so I don't see you and you don't see me. But, you know, I was born and raised, whenever you screw up, whenever you make a wrong, you own it, and then you make it right, and that's what I'm here to do.
Well, first, let me tell you, thank you for coming. I appreciate you showing up, and I appreciate your proposal here. So first of all, any of the council have any questions or comments about the proposal that's on hand that Mr. Rosely has suggested?
Well, I just want to say, we're not picking on you.
I understand that, fully. And that's, that's.
There's hundreds of other businesses in Scottsboro that, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I'm fully aware of that, and I don't want you guys to think that I'm thinking you're picking on me, because I know you're not, you know? I mean, I'm just, I'm a small business, I'm a three-man operation, sometimes four on a good day, but I, I don't ever want anybody to think that I'm avoiding them, you know? My own mom lives a street away from me, she could throw an apple and hit me in the head while I'm cutting ribeyes, but, you know, sometimes she'll call, and I'll miss three phone calls from my own mama. I've, I've never ducked anybody, I never tried to hide from anybody, you know? And I don't think you guys are picking on me, I don't. But I want you to know that I know what I owe, and I know how to make it right, and that's what I intend on doing.
Well, and I, I want to go on and say, you know, you're here tonight because, of course, the other plan didn't go through.
Yes, sir.
And I told you, I couldn't make an agreement again without a whole council approval.
Yes, sir.
And so that's why we're here, and so he has brought your proposal. So if no one else has any questions or comments on it, I'll put it on next week's agenda for a vote.
Okay. So I'm good to go in the meantime?
In the meantime, yes, sir, until after the vote, for sure.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
All right, thank you. All right, number 11, announce vacancy on, on the electric power board. Ms. Phillips?
Grady Jacobs and Alan Williams' terms on the electric power board expire May 2024. These are six-year terms. Anyone interested should apply in writing to the city clerk's office by 4:30 PM on Friday, May 17, 2024.
Okay. Thank you. All right, that will conclude this meeting tonight. There's no delegations, so we'll go to reports. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing I have today, had a call about 4 o'clock this afternoon, and it was confirmed that Scottsboro will be returning to the Huntsville DMA the fall of this year.
Nice.
So thanks, everyone, for their efforts in putting this together. Congressman Strong, Senator Brett, Senator Tuberville, they were very influential in making this happen. I think you'll see some press releases coming out from the congressional delegation probably tonight, but we will be returning to Huntsville DMA in the fall of this year. That's all I've got, Mr. President.
And for the people who don't understand that, that means we'll get our Huntsville stations back. So I thank everyone who worked on that, because I know that's been a big deal around town, so. Mr. Dahl?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Toliver?
Only thing I have tonight is to thank everybody coming out two weeks ago for our pals cleaning up Willow. We ended up having 106 bags of trash, even had a mattress. So I really do appreciate 70, I want to say 72 people came out, and we ended up with 32 pounds, 3,200 pounds?
3,200.
3,200.
Yeah.
3,200, let me correct that. Pounds of garbage.
Yes.
Can you imagine what we could do if we start every street? And I'm just challenging everyone here in your neighborhood, pick up, pick up and don't be a litter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ashburn?
I just want to piggyback on that comments with the pals. It was well attended by students from the Caldwell that I knew of, some high schoolers, head Board of Education member and water searing gas member helped us that morning and, and with the council, and I had a lot of fun. We cut up and carried on, but we got a lot of garbage picked up, and I appreciate everybody's help. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Frederick?
And I'll piggyback, we'll do it again. We don't want to burn everybody out, but we will do that again. And I just want to say, or repeat what Mike said, and keep it up. Like 40% of litter is accidental, so if you see something out there and you can pick it up, pick it up, please. I mean, we've got to do that kind of thing and ask business owners to pick up around their property, make it look good. And I could tell a difference after we did that. Yes. And I, I think anybody that was kind of looking beforehand could tell. All right, that's all about pals, we've said enough about that. And I do want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I mean, this is a huge crowd. I wish there was this many people here every Monday night. So I appreciate everybody coming out that had concerns and, and comments. And I also want to make one little say, I appreciate my granddaughter Hayden Mitchell for coming with me tonight. She's interested in government, and I appreciate that. That's all.
Thank you. Just also on the pals, I just want to say, Cheyenne Bennett, thank you for the card. If y'all didn't see her card she sent afterwards, I really appreciate that. It meant a lot. Announce, next week, we'll have a meeting on the 13th, but also there'll be SWDA meeting at 4 o'clock before the meeting. That's mainly for up here, so you don't forget.
Thank you.
And then May 20th, we will have a work session and a meeting that night, because the next Monday is Memorial Day, and we won't meet that day.
What time is SWDA?
4 o'clock. 4 o'clock on the 13th, 5 o'clock meeting. All right. All right. I appreciate everyone coming out. Where are you, Jim?